Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hudsonville City Commission Regular Session dated May 13th, 2025. Would everybody please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Commissioner Branson?
Here.
Commissioner DeRay?
Here.
Commissioner Groot?
Here.
Commissioner Camp?
Here.
Commissioner Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Mark Northrup.
Aye. All Commissioners are present. Thank you. Now's the time for a moment of silence. I thought it'd be appropriate if we had a few private thoughts to wish all the graduates in our high school and our colleges and universities that are graduating and launching their careers and their lives. So we have a moment of silence for all the graduates. Thank you and we wish them well. Now's the time for public comments. If you're here for the public and choose to speak to the dais and not on the agenda, hearing nor seeing anyone, we will move on to the consent agenda items. There are five. City Commission Regular Session dated April 8th, City Commission Special Session dated April 22nd, Library Advisory Board dated April 15th, Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting Minutes dated April 15th, and of course, the Accounts Payable Reviewed and Approved Between Meetings by the Finance Committee and City Manager. The only item to note is I want to make sure that the City Commission is aware that in the City Commission Special Session Minutes, there is discussion and approval of the Elected Officials Compensation Board. You may not be aware, gentlemen, but we got a very, very small increase this year. Actually, I think it's less than COLA, the REFLX, the recent two years, but it's not nothing about any concern or anything outrageous. We, I think, all discuss and are aware of it. But I just want to make sure we're public with that, that there is a very small pay raise for the Commissioners and the Mayor. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or have a change, say no. Hearing none, the consent agenda items carries. Moving on to the departmental reports. Seeing that Fire Chief Steve Estenberg is not here, Deputy Fire Chief Moore will be covering.
Good evening. Fire Department responded to 54 calls in April, bringing their total to 255. We did run with Jamestown on a garage/barn fire, assisted with that. And then we also utilized Jamestown's new training facility out in their Forest Coast Station. They converted an old storage unit into a maze, if you will. So we got to practice several scenarios in a controlled setting, which was fantastic for the guys and girls to get into. So I want to thank Jamestown Fire Department for letting us use their facility. I don't have anything else besides that.
You and I were speaking beforehand about the call-out you had on Sunday and that you provided coverage for many of the local communities while there was response at a chip fire factory, is it?
Yes. So 96 Fort Sheldon, I want to say it was around 2:30, London got called out. I think we finally got called to Zeeland City's Main Street Station at about 8 o'clock and were there till midnight.
And how many villages and cities?
From what I understand, every tanker in Ottawa County was there. And then they pulled tankers from Alligan and as far north as Norton Shores.
But we didn't respond. We were just the on-call for all those.
Correct. We were covering Zeeland City, Zeeland Township area.
And I think it just was kind of interesting to know when I was looking at the news that the tankers, all the tankers, and we don't have a tanker, so we can't.
Correct.
We don't have the really ability to pour water on a fire out in the country like that. But every tanker available was brought in to pour water on that. So, good job, your team. You called, I think, at least it looks like about six or seven of them for the day. So were you there?
No, I was on the golf course.
Yeah, I saw it. Very good. Anything else? Thank you.
You bet.
Moving on to the Sheriff's Department, we'll just pull up the notes there. If you haven't had a chance, review those. Nothing out of the ordinary. Sergeant Tamiga is not available tonight, but nothing of any concern or nothing that jumps out at me, City Manager.
Ms. Mayor, I did have an opportunity to talk with Sergeant Tamiga this afternoon. Really appreciate the collaboration between the Sheriff's Department and city staff on taking some traffic data and obviously routine discussions of maybe safer and increase our efficiency in terms of communications with the department. Really appreciated his time and the efforts of the department.
Thank you, Tyler. I just, I had some correspondence this afternoon or yesterday with the sheriff and on the web, you see things on the web, and there was a police department in Michigan that had rescued a baby deer, what do you call that, a fawn? And it had several million clicks. And I just, it occurred to me that we give millions of clicks to saving a deer, but when a police officer saves a life, it gets no coverage. And it was just kind of, you know, it was a cute story, but it was for me a little bit sobering. So when you ever get a chance, please thank our on-call and emergency people that keep our community safe and also occasionally rescue a lost deer. But that's not their real mission. Moving on to the Emergency Management Department, Mr. Dahl?
Good evening. Just a couple of things I'd like to highlight on the report tonight down toward the bottom. First of all, the radio communication training, I wanted to emphasize, that wasn't physically how to use a radio. We've been doing that for a long time. The county has 800 megahertz radio, we have VHF radio, we have amateur radio with a lot of people. This is about how do we use each of those? When is the right time to use each of those different types of radios? And when you do, what's the right way to do it? What are the protocols? What do you say, what do you not say? There's certain things you don't advertise over the radio. And I was actually asked by the county to be one of the panelists on that to give perspectives on it. So, interesting training, something that we had not really, really done before in my time here, anyway. And then the other thing I want to note was Robert Mullen decided to resign from the department after, I believe, if my notes are correct, 16 years. He was a great guy in the department. He, for a while, has lived on the other side of Grand Rapids, so it got to be challenging. And he just got to a point where he thought, you know what? Might have run this out and it might be time to look at other ways to do things. So we wish him well. If he moves back to this side of town, we would certainly love to have him back. But I just wanted to make a note there that he left on very good terms and it wasn't, there were no issues either direction. Any questions or comments?
Any ideas on how you want to fill your two openings? Is how you're going to recruit for that or find somebody?
So we have one person who applied a while back when we didn't have an opening. Tried getting ahold of him. He's probably dealing with wrapping up a semester and finals at Grand Valley. So I'll give him another few days here, get into the latter half of May, and I'll try and get ahold of him, see if we can get him in for an interview. And also at Meyer, I worked with somebody who was part of the Emergency Operations Team at Meyer and just moved to Hudsonville. And so I will be putting a hard sell on that guy, too.
Well, the school superintendent is here. There might be a graduating senior that would be interested in serving, so you might want to put a bug in his ear.
There we go, yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to departmental or to City Treasury Monthly Report for April, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, we're at about 95% of our revenues for the year and 80% of the expenditures. Our revenue, we should come in pretty close to 100%. We're waiting on about $300,000 from state shared revenue. So that will push us right up to close to 100% there. And, let's see.
Is that standard revenue sharing?
That's the standard state revenue sharing, yes, sir. It's about two years, or not two years behind, two months behind. So we'll get our last payment for this fiscal year in August, so that's why that's showing there, but we'll have that soon. As far as interest is concerned, we're at just over $36,000 for the month, which brings us to about $470,000 for the year. So we'll finish over a half million in interest this year again, so.
So we're going to make payroll?
So we'll make payroll, yes, sir. And then, that was about the only things of note for me this month. If you noticed in your approval of the payments, that was just higher because of that payment to Ottawa County for the transmission main, our portion of that. So just in case there is any questions why bills were so high this month, that was why. And that was pre-approved at the previous meeting.
Any questions for Finance Manager, Director? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Economic Department Director's Report. Jacob, welcome.
Glad to be here. Well, since I last shared some updates with you on the grant tracker, we've had three new applications that we've submitted. One of them through the Clerk's Office for reimbursement grant for the Bureau of Elections for $3,000. That was for security cameras for the most recent round of elections that we just had. The second one comes from the Planning and Zoning Department for the Safe Streets and Roads for All. That's what the grant program is called, and that's for 32nd Chicago Drive and Service Drive. The amount there is just north of $192,000 for the grant request. And the third one comes through DPW for another M.TEDF grant, category F for this one, and this is for Balsam Drive, and that is for $267,000. So totaling everything for 2025, we are just shy of $1.4 million in grant asks on projects totaling just over $2.3 million. So a lot of good activity going on right now. And then also grant-related to information we'll get this month. On Thursday, May 29th, they are going to be announcing the Match on Main winners. So we did submit two grants for that through the Downtown Development Association for Leaping Panda Hobbies and for Hudsonville Chiropractic. So hoping to hear positive news on that at the end of the month. And if you can believe it, it's actually been three months since I've given a quarterly update, so I've got a couple other bullet points if you're okay with me sharing those real quick. Later on the agenda before you, you'll have a memo for the intent to create a resolution for the intent to create a municipal brownfield redevelopment authority. Happy to answer questions on that now or later in the agenda as we just pushed another project through, but as we've also talked throughout city leadership and local staff, just the benefits that we have to keep local control, to create our own local brownfield authority, especially as we look towards the development opportunities and redevelopment opportunities, to be frank, with the village green projects that we have as we work down that pipeline. So happy to answer questions on that. Additionally, the Triangle Property, the DDA's Triangle Property, last Wednesday at our meeting, we heard three presentations from different area developers. I heard good feedback from DDA members on that. We've got a special meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock in the community room where the DDA is going to be meeting to approve our budget for the next fiscal year, and we're also going to be deciding on the next steps forward for the Triangle Property. Thank you to the couple of Commissioners that came out to that meeting last Wednesday and supported for that. No doubt incentives are going to be a part of that discussion, so that is eventually whoever we pick and whatever decisions we make, we're going to be coming before this board and likely the Planning Commission as well. And then the last note that I'll share on is kind of building on the work that the Planning and Zoning Department has done over the years as it relates to liquor licenses as we think about building out our population in the downtown. We're currently capped when it comes to our quota licenses, which is a good problem to have, and as we grow, we'll gain more. But I've written some recent memos on that and again, kind of more so built on past documents that we've utilized and as that pertains to just the development of downtown and bringing new liquor licenses in and hopefully establishing some new businesses and bringing well-established names to the community as well. So outside of that, the one thing that I'd like to share is I'm going to be trying to be engaging with Mandy Cooper and Lake Shore Advantage. They're going to be hosting a Developer Day, if you are all familiar with that. I've got plenty of experience. I've hosted two of those in Montcom County over the last two years and attended countless events for the right place for their Developer Days as well. So that's really an opportunity for developers all across the state of Michigan and West Michigan and really the Midwest and whoever wants to come see the development opportunities that we have in the region of West Michigan and some specific things that we maybe have going on here in Hudsonville. So I'm really going to try to work diligently to have one of the stops on that tour for Lake Shore Advantage to be in the city of Hudsonville and introduce some new developers to our community. So that event is going to be on August 7th, and you'll likely hear more on that throughout the summer as I work with Lake Shore Advantage. With that, I'm happy to take questions, comments, concerns, gripes. I'll leave for the City Manager.
Any pushes or comments for Jacob? Couple. We do convene an ad hoc alcohol board. We've done that in the past.
Okay.
So just keep that on your radar, that the Commission wants to be a little bit involved in some of that.
Absolutely.
Process. It's not real rigid, but we have established that. I think, Larry, you've been on it, and I think maybe you're the only one left that was on that alcohol board, but it's kind of nice to balance that off the Commission before we start making.
Absolutely. Travel knowledge is important.
I want to thank you for the effort on the RFP process for the Triangle Property. I'm looking forward to tomorrow for the scorecard process. I did talk to Jack and I also talked to Andrew Gimmern. We're both looking forward to working through that process tomorrow and scorecarding the three proposals as it came back at us. And finally, I was really impressed with the work that you did on the brownfield proposal.
Oh, thank you.
The level of detail and thoroughness and legalese there, I was really impressed that that was not done by an attorney at several tens of thousands of dollars when Tyler told me. So we appreciate and recognize your talent you bring to the community.
Thank you. Well, I'll give some credit back to Kurt Pirschbacher on that one. I was working off his document from Fishback. So again, building on the shoulders of the Giants there.
It's okay to copy.
No need to recreate the wheel.
Anything else, Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Moving on to Administration. Is there a motion for the PA 152 hard cap annual exemption? Who's on the first out committee? Or Finance? Either. Sorry.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-1814 to exempt, motion to remain compliant with Public Act 152, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act of 2011 for benefit year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026.
Support. So it moves supported. Andrea, you want to speak to that? It's your handiwork, correct?
This one is my handiwork. So PA 152 is something that we've talked about in years past, but essentially what that is, is the state of Michigan sets these hard caps for public employers, that's municipalities, local government, schools included in that as well. They set contribution limits for health insurance. The last couple of years, we have passed resolutions to be exempt. You have three options when it comes to being in compliance with that Public Act. The first one is to fall underneath those hard caps. The second option is to pass a resolution to become an 80/20 cost share. And the third one is to be exempt from falling under the hard caps. We've chosen in the last couple of years to use that exemption tool. Our current cost share with our employees is 8218, so that's the section that we would fall under. We've been creative this year in what we've been doing to try and mitigate the rising costs of health insurance. So we've done some shopping, we have some items that we'll discuss during the budget meeting to help reduce those costs, not only to the city but to our employees as well. But at this point, what we're hoping for is a resolution to pass to remain exempt and hold that 8218 cost share with our employees on our health insurance premiums.
Andrea, I'm going to ask you, do you hear a lot of talk from the employees about that share? I mean, does that discussion comes up with them?
Yeah, so it's certainly something that's been brought up. The city had at one point paid 100% of insurance premiums. We saw the city ask for some cost sharing with employees over time, and that cost share has slowly increased on the employee end to remain under those hard cap amounts. And where we sit with the 8218 split right now, we are still above those limits set by the state. So there was a bill that passed both chambers at the state level last year to help mitigate with some of this. Unfortunately, it just didn't make it to the governor's desk. But the way that the Public Act is written, the increase to the capped amounts is not keeping up with the premiums of the health insurance agencies. So the gap there just keeps widening. With our broker who we go through, we're part of the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool, we're in their Small Groups Program, but the amount of lives that we cover certainly don't help us in meeting those cap amounts, too, because we can't, we just can't spread the cost along as many lives as some larger organizations.
Any questions for Andrea or Tyler on this? We discussed it. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Want to give kudos to Andrea. In the last few months, we've been trying to get creative. We understand the cost of healthcare is rising for the city and for our employees. So during the budget workshop, we'll have more information about some cost-reducing measures. Andrea did a great job on that. We got this information very late in the process. It took the necessary time to get done, but look forward to a good budget workshop with this conversation. But this is one case, we're talking about health insurance and costs. We have some good news, and I look forward to sharing that. But regardless, the budget, the draft budget is built out. With the approval of this resolution, of course, that can be changed, but again, we did find some cost-saving measures.
Healthcare is expensive and it's not going down.
Mm-hmm.
That's just the reality of our expectations for healthcare now. Yeah, there's a motion on the floor or any other discussion? Hearing none, I believe I need a roll call on this.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeRay?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Yes.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
And Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea and Tyler, for the work there and make sure the employees understand we're committed to doing our best when it comes to sharing healthcare costs. Moving on to item number six, rationale for establishing a municipal brownfield redevelopment authority. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-1815 authorizing the setting of a public hearing date for the intention of creating and operating a brownfield redevelopment authority in the city of Hudsonville.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. I think we all know the challenges that we went through with the brownfield process with the county here a couple weeks ago, and knowing that we're going to be having more brownfield opportunities. Tyler and I, and he's discussed this with several of us about, it's just best that we just took control and not allow somebody to manage our future. I think our judgment and our knowledge here is just as good as anybody at the county, quite frankly. So this gives us a much greater local control of our destiny and how we develop our city. Tobin? It looks like you want to say something.
Oh, no, I didn't really intend to say that. I will support that. And other municipalities do the same. We're not the first.
And, you know, the city's getting bigger and we're doing more development, so it's just, it falls in line. Kurt Pirschbacher has been a great source of advice for us. He sits in the DDA and he's been working with, he works in the industry. He understands this and has actually volunteered to be Chair this for the city. So I think we couldn't find a better, more qualified person. Any other discussion? Then we will no longer have to go through. That is correct. That is correct. And we get to still make the decision on how the TIF is managed. There's no reason to even discuss this with the county, and we just do it. Prevent some. Yeah, some. Yeah, yeah. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Yes.
Commissioner DeRay?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the Hughes Park Parking Lot Easement. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-1816 approving an easement for a shared parking lot with Hudsonville Public Schools on Hughes Park property.
Support. It's been moved and supported. We have discussed this ad nauseam from my perspective. I think the memo that's been provided, I think, is quite clear. I see Doug Bannerjack, the school superintendent, is here. I told Tyler this several times, from the view of the community, they don't really care who in the government owns a piece of property, if it's the city or the school or the state. All they care about is that it's maintained and it's successful to them. So from my perspective, this easement is, I think we've over-talked it, quite frankly, from my opinion. Now, obviously, the issue on liability's been discussed. Once again, there's always liability with any property. We had a lady trip and break her ankle on a crack, tear a square here a few years back. Remember that? I mean, that's just, that's going to happen occasionally. So I think we're overthinking this, in my opinion, but nonetheless, due diligence was done, the attorney has reviewed this, there's been some minor changes. If anybody would like to speak more to it, I'm welcome to hear it. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeRay?
Yes.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks for being present, Doug, and have a pleasant evening and good luck with the graduates. Moving on to item number eight, Declaration and Notice for MDNR Trust Fund Grant Butter Milk Creek Park. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the City Manager to sign the Declaration and Notice for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for the project TF21-0106 Butter Milk Creek Park Restrooms and Parking Lot.
Support.
Been moved and supported. I had breakfast with Tyler this morning, I guess the whole hang-up was there had to be some landscape issues that still needed to be resolved. We're done now, is that?
We're still working on the landscape. It's part of the MDNR closeout procedure. They needed some final information from staff. We worked with Tom DeVries at Fleece and Banner Brick to be able to get that in. This is a normal closeout procedure as part of the grant. We received most of the grant. I think the last outstanding payment is in the neighborhood of $35,000. So this allows us to get the appropriate information submitted, albeit I have to click the right box and press save and send, but other than that, we'll get that money home for this fiscal year.
Who does it? You or Andrew?
Tyler does.
Tyler does it?
I do.
Well, make sure you click the right box.
Yeah, I'm going to try my best, sir.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Yes.
Commissioner DeRay?
Yes.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, and for matter of record, I think there is a ribbon-cutting, correct, plan of sorts.
June 10th at noon.
June 10th at noon.
Yep, and a beautiful building, but we are working on fixing or addressing some of the landscaping that was adjusted through the winter months. So it sounds like we'll have a lot of fresh soil, but through soil comes growth, but beautiful ribbon cutting.
You know, public amenities such as bathrooms are transparent. You don't miss them unless you don't have them, you don't realize it. So I know that, you know, bathrooms is not glamorous, it's mundane, there's no wow factor, but if you don't have public bathrooms to support your public, your facilities are not up to par to give the community what they need and expect, and they're not going to use the facilities. So public bathrooms, that bathroom will be there long after I'm gone and So public bathrooms, that bathroom will be there long after I'm gone and any of us are here. So it's, it's a legacy that we leave, and it's a kind of a quiet, unspoken legacy, but it is very important for the community. So I want to thank everybody here. This, we think about it, we sold the ballpark in Hillcrest, how many years ago? Six? Seven? So this was the final outcome of that, that long journey. So thank you, everybody. Motion carries. Let's move on to the next item, which is the City of Hudsonville Master Plan, Public Distribution. Is there a motion?
Would you like me to?
I would love you to. You, you, because you've been quite, like, one of the most involved, I think.
Motion to approve distribution of the proposed City of Hudsonville Master Plan to the notice group specified in Section forty-one-two of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act Thirty-three of two thousand and eight, as amended for review and comment.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. I see that we have McKenna here. Chris, as always, it's good to see you.
Good to be here.
You always come with great information, and I always learn something. So you have the floor.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and it's good to be back. I am proud to say, Commissioners, that we are here tonight with a full draft that has been recommended to you by the Planning Commission for what's called distribution, which we've talked about before. A positive vote tonight on this motion would authorize staff and McKenna to send out the draft to the required notified entities required on the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, as well as to make the draft available to the public, both online and here at City Hall in hard copy, as well as, I believe, we also have a copy at the library. Before we do that, before you vote, I do want to run you through what is in the current draft. Much of this you have seen before. And so I'll focus primarily on the things where there have been tweaks and updates since the last time I presented to you. And then we'll go through the next steps in the process, if you don't mind. So we're talking, as I've done previously, about the inputs to the master plan, the data we gathered, and why. And then, thanks, the outputs. What are the key recommendations of the plan on what topics, and where can you find them? Go ahead. And then you guys will vote. All right, those inputs. The first thing we take a look at, obviously, is what does the city look like today? And that's what this existing land use map is. Very few changes to this, maybe a couple of cleanup things since you last saw this map. Key use of this map is to identify our greenfield sites, our sites that are not yet developed. And part of the process is to determine whether those are appropriate for development or whether they need preservation. And I'll get to that a little later. Another key input is our environmental natural features. For you guys, the big one is floodplain. You see how with Buttermilk Creek, you do have some floodplains in the city, including on some of your undeveloped parcels. In some cases, these render them hard or impossible to develop. In other cases, there's opportunities to mitigate. Go ahead. We also did significant community engagement. Last summer, we had three community engagement meetings, including one that took place during Happenings at Harvey, which was really exciting, a lot of fun. And we also had some online engagement. So there are opportunities for people to participate on their own time. And then last Thursday, we had a final engagement called the Plan Unveiling. At Terrace Square, we had a lot of the elements of the plan were available for the public to take home or comment on. And so we gave that opportunity to the public to see the final version. That was sort of an informal kickoff to the comment period. We're hoping you'll formally kickoff tonight. Additionally, we looked into housing market, deepened housing market data, and that's because that is a key facet of real estate development and the market right now. Everyone's talking housing. You guys, I believe, have seen some of these numbers before. One of the key takeaways of what, of what you hear is how quickly we are currently building housing in Hudsonville, which is actually discussed on the next slide. You've got five-hundred-and-thirty-seven houses, housing units, right? Houses, apartments, et cetera, under construction or recently completed. The data that we can gather from various sources like the census is lagging compared to what you're actually seeing on the ground. So, next slide, if you don't mind. When we do our demand projections for housing based on the population you have in Hudsonville now, and the trends you're seeing just within your borders, we're seeing a demand for six hundred new housing units by 2040. If we go outside those borders, because people don't just look within the city of Hudsonville for housing, they don't even just look within Hudsonville schools. When looking for housing, they're looking over a broad range of neighborhoods and areas where they might be interested. And we usually understand that area based on commuting patterns. So that orange blob you see on your screen is the average commuting distance for a Hudsonville resident. It's about twenty minutes. And that's how far you can get in twenty minutes. The assumption is that if you're looking for housing and you have a job in those, in that orange blob, you're going to look for housing in that orange blob. So that is the area that is kind of defined your housing market. And that area, the high population, high growth, needs about a hundred thousand new housing units before 2040. Why is that important? Next slide. Well, because where are those five-hundred-and-thirty-seven housing units? Oh, you're almost at the six hundred that would be demanded just by your own population. And that's because you're absorbing some of that regional demand, and you're absorbing it at a higher rate than we would, than you have in the past. You're about two percent of the housing market, and that percentage is increasing. Why is that? Why do we think that is? Because we have infrastructure here, because we have good schools, because people want to live here, because you have policies that are positive for the type of housing that you want, which is to say, housing that matches your community character and that helps build out your goals, like building your downtown. So go ahead. So the master plan's key conclusion of all of that is that that is what needs to be happening going forward with housing. You're going to have demand for people to continue to move here, and that means demand for more housing. But you have limited space for it. Primarily, you have your downtown, where we have a vision, and you've had a vision for the past decade, of building that up. That's going to take private investment. That private investment needs to make money, and the way they're going to make money is housing. And that housing will then support the businesses and make the downtown vibrant. That's probably the order things are going to go in, and you're already seeing that, I think. Terrace Station, Prospect Flats, you're seeing the housing coming into the downtown. And the second part is those greenfield sites on the edge of town. And obviously, as I've talked about with you guys before, we'll talk in very detailed about the Highland Drive corridor area. But there's others as well. The takeaway, as you can see, is that we need to demand quality in those limited remaining development sites. And also that while we should be allowing and promoting housing on those sites, we don't feel that, we should not feel the need to maximize the density. We should match the density to what exists around. That doesn't necessarily mean matching housing type. Not everything has to be single-family. But as far as the number of units, we want to make sure that those are consistent with surrounding neighborhoods and consistent with infrastructure. And we're working on the zoning side of that with staff and Steering Committee and the Planning Commission right now to really articulate what that looks like and how we can get there. So next. So what are the outputs in the master plan? This is something that we created for last Thursday's meeting, really to try to define the plan to the general public. The future land use map, which I'll show you guys in a second, gets a little technical, ties to zoning. This is just trying to explain in very simple terms, what's the plan? Well, the plan is in four colors. The beige color means no change in character or land use. Those are your existing neighborhoods, and those are places where we're not anticipating that much of anything is going to get bulldozed or changed. Anything newly built there is going to reflect what's already there. The red is new construction. Those are open land right now that are available for new construction. They're not burdened by the floodplain or other natural features. And they can be developed on. So that's what the red is. Green are parks and open space. These are areas that are either existing parks or open undeveloped land that really shouldn't or can't be developed because of natural features considerations. And then finally, the purple, redevelopment and infill. This is areas where there may be building stock there already, and in the coming years, that may be replaced by something else. There are, as you can see, two, two purple blobs on there. One is the downtown and its immediate surroundings. And so I don't know that there, I have to go into too much detail there. It's pretty clear. We're building up the downtown. Some of the existing buildings and development in the downtown don't necessarily match the vision. When the time comes, those will be replaced. As I'll talk about in a minute, with the downtown, every building and business is important in the moment, and we want to make sure that they all thrive. But there will come a time where there is turnover there. And then the southern part of the city, the industrial area and the interchange, those types of uses have a natural churn, particularly the interchange commercial businesses. Those buildings frequently have a twenty, twenty-five-year life cycle. And then the, the chain restaurants and businesses will come in and replace it with their next prototype, or a new business will come in. So that's likely to happen. And industrial, we know, has turnover, a little slower pace, but there's potential turnover there, too. So those are some areas where you may see some change. Next. This is the future land use map. This goes into some more detail, as I mentioned, and you guys, again, have seen this before. You know, key takeaways here include defining the scope of the downtown, defining the edge of the Thirty-second Avenue Commercial Corridor as it comes into town at New Holland. And then one big sort of philosophical thing we put on this map, which is this, this concept of neighborhood. The concept that all of our housing development, some of which may have happened fifty, seventy, a hundred years ago, some of which will happen in the future, should all contribute to one coherent Hudsonville, so that it is all a neighborhood, not a development or a subdivision or a complex, but a neighborhood that flows both physically and socially in amongst itself. So that's what that, that's why that color is where it is and why it has the name that it does. Next slide. Switching to your road network for a minute. This is the corridor design plan, and this is kind of your future land use for your roads. And what this does is categorizes each, categorizes each of your roads into its purpose for travel. You see the bright red Chicago Drive going to the center of town. And that is a regional boulevard. It is for regional travel. People go fast on it. To be honest, one thing we found as part of this process is Chicago Drive isn't really an asset for you guys. It's a challenge, right? People have to cross it on foot, on bikes, any cars, and then they have to think about where they're going to cross it. It's not going anywhere, though we hope maybe at some point MDOT will make, take some steps to slow the speeds, but that's not necessarily imminent, so it's something we have to work around. Then we look at the purple roads. Those are the roads that people in Hudsonville actually use to traverse Hudsonville, right? Again, in cars, on bikes, and on foot. We call those the neighborhood connectors. And those are ones where you're going to want to make sure that there is throughput of traffic, but also that that traffic is moving at a reasonable speed so that it is safe for people who are on bikes and on foot, et cetera. You may also notice the orange on there. We call those business connectors. Those are going to be roads that, again, really for the traversing of Hudsonville, but they're to get to big businesses. So the industrial area, the interchange commercial area, you're going to have truck traffic. Traffic's going to be a little faster. It's going to be a little less walkable in those areas just by necessity and by land use. And then we have our yellow, which are downtown mixed-use streets, and those are going to be primarily for walking and a little, and some biking, right? Cars could go on them, but they're really going there to access the business and park. They're not going through to get anywhere else. Therefore, the primary sort of use of those streets is parking and walking, and maybe cycling. So that's sort of that other end of the spectrum. Quick note on the green, the Natural Beauty Corridor, that's New Holland Street going into the Nature Preserve. So it's kind of, kind of got a unique situation there. And then everything else is a neighborhood street, which means it's residential. People live on it. The primary purpose of that road is people accessing their houses. So traffic should be very slow. Kids are going to be playing, et cetera. Next. This calls out the bicycle transportation, the infrastructure that you have now and that you could have, that we're planning for in the future. You see the trails and such that are in place now. This also calls for kind of a grid of bike lanes on some of those neighborhood connectors, so to connect in and allow cycling through the community a little more seamlessly. Next one. This is more aspirational, but it is the potential future opportunity to have some public transportation. This idea would kind of leverage off the West Michigan Express if and when that happens, and that's obviously not imminent either, but it is in the planning stages. Because if that happens, you're going to have this one bus stop in town, right? And that, that would be able to hit Grand Rapids or Holland or destinations in between. But how are you supposed to get to it? And this would be one opportunity to do something like this. We call it the Hudsonville Shuttle in the plan. The idea would be something that has a little character to it, like the Grand Haven Trolley or something like that. And that would circulate through the north side neighborhoods, from the fairgrounds, through the downtown, past the high school, and down to the Myers. And obviously, this is, again, aspirational. So all the operational details that would have to be worked out, they're not in the plan yet, but they will have to be if this is to be implemented. This is the kind of thing that we say, if it's not in the plan, it will never happen. So we have to put it in the plan so it even becomes a possibility. And when this becomes appropriate, or if it becomes appropriate, then we can work on implementation. Next. Going to a couple of key development sites. This is Highland Drive, or we're calling it Highland Drive. This would be an extension of Highland Drive on the east side of town. A key takeaway here, or one key aspect of the plan, the plan makes very clear, this roadway, which has been planned for a long time at this point, and at one point we've maybe thought of as a bypass, is not a bypass. It is not for traffic to avoid Chicago Drive or cut down the one-ninety-six. That is not going to the purpose of the road. The purpose of this road is to act as access for new neighborhoods in this area. That means this road should be designed for slow speeds. But we have a problem. And that problem is the existing infrastructure in the area. There's a gas line, and there's a sewer line. And you can see them as dotted lines on the plan if you look closely. They run underground. They run kind of close together. They cross in certain places. They don't run right next to each other. And in order to keep those daylightable and not build on top of them, we actually have to create a very wide right-of-way for Highland Drive. Wide right-of-way and slow traffic don't go together. The solution on here is what on the map looks, admittedly, like some kind of an oddly-shaped medians. And that is intentional. It's for traffic coming. By creating that green space in the middle of the neighborhood, by creating that green space between the traffic lanes, we're hoping to slow traffic, hoping to actually add a little bit of hesitancy even to drivers, because then they won't use this to cut through. But if you live here, this is how you access your driveway, or in some of these housing units, your parking space. This is an opportunity to bike. You'd be a bike path along it, et cetera. So kind of a unique and creative solution you had to come up with to an interesting problem there. As far as the housing that is planned here, as you can see, it's primarily clustered in a couple of spots. On the north, by Berry Street, which could potentially have some mixed use, but doesn't necessarily need it. And then in a, in a cluster in kind of the center, and if you are familiar with the site, that's kind of the high ground in that area. And then the, the slight slopes off in a direction. So towards the south and towards the north, you have these ravines and ponds, and that's why those areas are reserved as green space, recreation space, open space, maybe some trails, something like that. The, and then towards the south, we're in more of a townhouse duplex and single-family character as you start to lower, lower the density a little bit. The other important thing here is those yellow lots. Usually, traditionally in this type of planning, single-family is shown as lots rather than buildings. And so you're seeing is the single-family lots that line the western and southern lines of this property, which would back onto the existing single-family. So those, those homeowners will back to, they won't back to woods anymore if this is developed, but they will back to another single-family home, back-to-back backyards, rather than some other, some other land use. So it creates that transition from that, the existing neighborhood into this neighborhood and some different types of housing. So that's that. Next, we see a little bit of architecture, that, just the type of architectural quality that we want to see, and, and their architectural types. So this is going to be laid out in more detail in the zoning update that we're currently working on, and the update to the traditional residential neighborhood zoning district. Because one of the things we're trying to do here, as we say, we're trying to build new neighborhoods. We're trying to build new neighborhoods that look like Hudsonville. And that means the buildings need to look like your existing buildings. And so we're really going to try to articulate that in the zoning ordinance. Next. Moving on to downtown. As we noted before in the previous presentation, we have five-year and twenty-year downtown concepts in the plan, understanding that certain things are implementable in the short term, and other things are going to take longer, or may not even be desirable in the next five years, but we want them to happen in the next twenty. So you'll see some differences between this and the other. Obviously, probably the big feature that jumps out at everybody, hopefully, on this plan is the village green, which I know this body is working hard on making that a reality, and steps have already been taken in that direction, some of the realigning the streets, et cetera. We're also working on the zoning side with what the zoning, with, making some tweaks to the form-based code about exactly how buildings are going to surround that village green and making sure we get good private sector development in that area as well. Another aspect to look at here is the extension of the Warner system, which right now runs on Harvey Street, completing that on Harvey, and potentially adding on Harvey Street, completing that on Harvey and potentially adding that design on Cherry and a section of Kelly. That is, Kelly, as shown there, is actually where its current right-of-way is. I know traffic's currently diverted slightly to the north into the parking lot, and the thought is to extend that Werners and leave the land to the north as sort of flexible space for businesses, which could be parking, but could be like outdoor dining or something. And then eventually, as you'll see on the 20-year plan, that road becomes a little more enclosed, but as with Harvey, we have to start somewhere. So switching to the 20-year plan, you see that Harvey Street, this one shows the B2 building and the other shopping places there eliminated. And again, that's something that is not desirable in the next five years because of the businesses that are in there, but may happen in the next 20. And what it would allow us to do is extend Harvey Street all the way down to Allen and kind of complete it and to take that Kelly Street area and turn that into a more, you know, walkable configuration where the buildings come up to it right along that new Werners. You also see a little new housing on the edges of the downtown, et cetera. So next. We are currently working, as I mentioned, on zoning, and I mentioned a few of these items as I went. The zoning ordinance will come before you for final adoption, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. So this is important for City Commission to be aware of. What are the key things we're working on? We're working on expanding that TRN district so that it can govern all your new greenfield housing development. Why? Because it demands quality. It demands a high architectural standard. It demands quality neighborhood design. And by having all of that coded in the ordinance, you can allow the new development by right. No planned unit developments or rezonings needed. It can be allowed by right, but it has the rules and regulations that ensure you get something consistent with the plan. That's what we're aiming for, for the TRN district. We're also, as I said, tweaking the downtown form-based code. This is going to impact the village green area in a positive way, we hope, as well as ensure that as you continue to get more and more development, you get some architectural variety, but that that architectural variety reflects, you know, sort of a Midwestern vernacular and not something that looks like it came from, you know, Palm Beach or California or something, right? So that's, we're working on that as well. We're also working on neighborhood design standards. This goes hand-in-hand with the TRN stuff, which is to say, we need connected road patterns, we need green space preserved, we need sidewalks, we need quality neighborhoods, not housing built on the cheap just because it's in high demand right now. And then we are going to look at some alternative energy stuff in that urban suburban complex or context of Hudsonville. You know, technology keeps changing, and we want to make sure that we're prepared for the various forms, especially the solar panels we're taking these days, to allow what makes sense in our context and sort of regulate what doesn't. We also want to better serve some of our existing businesses. Our neighborhood commercial district could use some tweaking, as well as the office service district, which right now kind of serves as like a, wait, why am I in this and not this better one where I could have a little more freedom to expand my business, especially with, as we've talked about, the housing market going up. The office market has gone down, and simply zoning for office is maybe insufficient for some areas and some businesses, so we're looking at switching those to the NC district. We are also looking at ways to better accommodate our existing downtown businesses when it comes to the form-based code, because buildings that are not in compliance with the form-based code, because they were built long before it was adopted, are currently pretty restricted and it's difficult to invest in them. That's not what we want. We want those people to be able to invest, and so we're working on sort of a junior set of rules that would apply to existing buildings that move our downtown in the right direction while still allowing investment in those existing buildings. So we're working on that as well. We also have a list of 114 things that Dan and Sarah have provided to us in the zoning ordinance, small tweaks, corrections, conflicts, other things that we're working through at the staff level, so that when you guys adopt an updated zoning ordinance at the end of the summer, they will have their long working list of that kind of stuff corrected as well, and it'll be easier to administer on a day-to-day basis. And finally, we'll work on the organizational structure as well. The current ordinance, while it's served you very well, is duplicative in some ways. It's got language that repeats several times, even though it's the same language. So we're kind of clearing that as well. Next slide. All right, next steps. Long ago, when I started talking, you guys made a motion to distribute this plan, and if that is a positive motion, we will move that forward with the 63-day comment period. We are standing by, ready to distribute everything, but that doesn't mean we can't make changes before distribution. So any notes that you guys have tonight, I can follow up on and get into that distribution draft, and it doesn't necessarily have to delay us. Next week, Planning Commission will be talking about zoning policies, and also we're going to have as part of that distribution period, a Business Stakeholder Roundtable, specifically at the downtown with that. We're having weekly virtual meetings with Dan and Sarah on those more specific technical zoning items and kind of working through all of that. We're hoping to wrap that up in the coming weeks, so we get a full zoning ordinance draft to keep moving forward with. That will all culminate in a public hearing July 16th at the Planning Commission, which will be on both the master plan and zoning ordinance, or they'll have two public hearings in one night. What they will do after that is if they are happy with the master plan, they will adopt it that night. They have that ability under the Planning Enabling Act, and this body has never removed that power from them and taken it on to yourselves. So unless that's something you're planning to do in the next few months, that process will end with the Planning Commission. But then on August 12th, we are planning to bring forward the updated zoning ordinance to you. Because you're the ones to vote on it that night, we will be providing that well in advance so that we can get your comments and feedback on it, so you are prepared that night. So please look out for that in the early to midsummer. With that, I'll take any questions, comments, and you can proceed to vote when ready.
Anything for the commissioners?
I do, if I may. First, I wanted to thank you for all the hard work that went into it. I was able to attend a few of those sessions. I know sometimes it feels like it's a lot of work to get input, but glad you folks were able to do that. Also wanted to thank you, in the future land use map, some of my neighbors off of School Avenue have chirped at me several times about the fact that over the last master plan, the city had planned to remove their houses and put in commercial center there of some degree, and so having that back to neighborhood is going to be greatly appreciated. That there were two other items that, depending on what the rest of the commission thinks. I do think we've heard several times about the importance of pedestrian crossings on Chicago Drive, but on that last chart, it ranked as the, Group C. And I know I will hear from constituents in War One that Group C is not a high enough priority for pedestrian crossings, especially into the downtown area that we hope to invest so much. And then second, I'm a little bit nervous about including the draft concept on Highland Drive. I'm in the loop on that discussion, its importance and those varieties of housing types, but the way that draft plan just looks inside this document, in my opinion, would raise more questions about what we're planning to do, and I don't know how necessary it is to include a draft concept in our master plan.
To your first comment, we can absolutely increase the priority on that. We have substantially increased the amount of information and ideas earlier in the document, but then later, yeah, I still noted as a, I would say, longer-term priority, just because of the number of impediments to some of those improvements, but I don't mind increasing that to an A priority.
Yeah, I certainly don't think it's going to be easy or in a short timeframe, but listing it as most critical is, I think, what I hear from neighbors in my ward in particular.
Okay, and I have no objection to that if that's the commission's consensus. On the Highland Drive thing, I mean, we don't have an objection to shifting that to sort of more of an advisory document for staff or something of that nature, but I would like to make sure that is the consensus of the commission before we go ahead and pull chunks out of the plan.
I'm going to speak in support of what Dave just said about Highland Drive. I think with the changes, improvements that we've made over the last year in terms of residential is fantastic, but I think we're, I don't know if saturation point is that, at least for now, I think that Highland Drive inclusion would be a powder keg.
Is that a consensus? Because I have a follow-up question, just to make sure we implement it correctly.
I would agree, we should remove it. It just creates too much controversy at the current moment.
So my follow-up question is, there is that drawing which I showed you on the following page after the drawing in the document is a page listing our development priorities for Highland Drive. Would you like to keep that, the written section in there? Potentially.
Is it possible to pull that back up?
Yeah, that's our best way to do that.
Well, the danger is that people see that as fact, and it's not, it's just a concept. It's just an idea.
It's very late, 200.
So if it is included, it would need to, it needs to have a caveat saying, this is purely a conceptual idea, not a final product.
But it also frames the way that we're thinking and visioning, and I think that's the danger, because we haven't had those formal discussions.
Gary. Jeremy, you're in the business.
Yeah, I don't have any objections to remove it of the plan. I think it's a good concept plan to have internally for staff and can lead future discussions, but I do have some reservations throwing that out to the public, because the public isn't always going to understand what is concept and what's not concept. You see a map, and even if it says draft somewhere on it, someone cuts that off when they screenshot it and then it gets out there and can get misconstrued pretty easily, I would say.
And I couldn't see, the part that bothered me the most was the way it's included, at least in our packet. It looks like it's a standalone draft concept without context in particular, so I was more worried about the map that says concept draft with all those things on someone else's property right now as the future there. I don't mind the long, I'm in support of providing more neighborhoods in the community. Gary Ratterink, who served before me on the Planning Commission and City Commission as well in the past, you know, said housing is what's key to having Hudsonville be Hudsonville, so I'm supportive of adding that in the long run. I just don't want to cause undue alarm at something before we're ready to do that.
So Sarah and Andrea are working on bringing up the actual plan documents so you can see the context for it and decide what you want to keep in and remove. And we'll say it's not uncommon in this type of process for that type of thing to be pulled out like this and kind of stuck in a drawer for staff, who then in a meeting around a table with a developer can say, hey, we've got this, can you replicate it? But it is not made into a, you know, formal part of the plan that has the imperative of commission vote and is vetted by the public, so then it becomes that sort of lower-level advisory document, but still has value. If you can scroll just a little bit back in the plan, I would say.
The big concern I'm hearing from the commissioners is we don't object to it. But we would like it as a standalone document, not included in the plan.
Yep, and I think that's.
That seems to be the consensus here. It's just we.
Keep going, guys.
Page 123.
Oh, thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, so there's the concept drawing in the document, and then if you go to the next page, there, as I said, there's some text, right? So it says, the key development priority describes why we're focusing on this spot, right? And that's because it's basically the largest undeveloped parcel you have, and you have to build a new road through it. And then it describes what your key development priorities is written out there as bullet points. So my question to you is whether you'd like to keep those in there, even if we remove the drawing.
I don't have a problem with the text.
I think the visual, it could create some blowback, misconstrued.
Well, I do like that solution, because what that does is it allows the concept plan to be used by staff in the way I described, and if a developer says, well, hang on, this was never adopted, they can say what this text was, and the two are consistent with each other. So I think there's a, that can be a reasonable solution that's concerned.
I think there seems to be some consensus here, so Sarah, you got it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for bringing that to the floor. Any other discussion here? I have a couple of things. One is, I just, good work seeing you involved in the public and your staff over the last six, eight months. I mean, it's pretty apparent you've committed yourself to Hudsonville.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that, the level of professionalism. By the very definition of a city, at least for me, we are high-density. And then when I think about the townships, by definition are going to be rural and green areas. The problem we're having in Ottawa County is that the townships have now become more high-density without appropriate infrastructure, particularly in regards to water and sewer, which has created a tremendous burden on our groundwater and in our ability to manage septic systems. And we know that, and we consume green area that's agricultural or, you know, open land, pastures, whatever, and now they become, you know, suburban big lot that's not supportive of what the current gen, next generation is looking for. So they just, by definition, that's kind of how I see the city. Maybe I'm wrong. We have green space. We have low density. We have residential. But the demand in the future, being a city where we are, particularly in regards to economic growth, we are going to be high-density. And to deny that is, I think, you really can't, because developers are looking to do that, too. Last thing, and this is really, I think, really for you, Andrew, you know, we've talked about this. You made reference early on to the census. And one of the things that Andrew and I have spoken about, Tyler, too, is that are we at a point where we should call for our own census and pay for it, because it would raise our revenue sharing with the state? Now, we were roughly 7,700 at the last census. I personally think in the 20, 30 census, we'll probably be 10,000 or close. At what point should we look to invest in a census? Because a census mid-period would be an expense by the city, but it would be offset by the additional revenue sharing. I don't, do you have any experience there?
Well, certainly we are mid-decade with regard to the federal decennial head count, and the American Community Survey that the census does every few years, or excuse me, not every few years, every year, is, for geographies this size, frequently inaccurate. It's the official numbers as we have them for 2023 and soon 2024, and then every year, you know, up to 2030. But because they only survey 1/32 of the population for that, and then they have to extrapolate, they do frequently miss growth, and we've actually seen it in Ottawa County communities. So that is the problem with the current numbers, and with regard to your population projection there, 537 housing units is likely to be over 1,000 residents, and that's a conservative estimate. So my only, the only area I'll admit some ignorance here is that I don't actually know if you conduct your own internal population, if you would say, accept that.
You involve your census, but you have to pay for it.
Okay, so if that is, if that is in fact, you know, does actually open up that additional revenue sharing, I wouldn't be surprised if those sort of official federal sources are lagging behind your growth and you could find additional population.
Andrew, you have any thoughts on it?
Yeah, just to clarify, like, is through the US Census Bureau paid for by the city, if that's what you're asking?
Oh, okay, that makes sense. And the state then would accept that sort of mid-decade?
And the state accepts it afterwards, yes, that would go up. We can also determine, we don't have to do a full citywide census. We could determine zones that have seen population growth and that would reduce our costs, but also still increase our population numbers, so we could do that. I think, you know, now is probably, you know, when's Terror Station opening up next year? So, you know, it'd be a good time probably to reevaluate that with Balsam Prospect Flats, and then up on Balsam, all the apartments there came online census, census and everything. And then, yep. Balsam Meadows, yeah.
Andrew, I think you could respond on there. I think the dust needs to settle a little bit more to get a better form of payment for the book. But one thing Andrew talked about six, seven months ago is we can run some generalized calculations scenarios, if this, then this, where we weigh out the cost of the census versus maybe a conservative approach on population, what we believe it is, and then maybe, hey, best case scenario in terms of the numbers, and run those pro formas to see, you know, how much we're actually getting in. But I think it's important to realize that we're talking about revenue through perpetuity up until the next census. And so, you know, we need to build that out where it could be a large-scale impact. But depending what those numbers look like with the growth that the city's had, I think we're talking about maybe really looking hard at this around this time next year, if not maybe quarter three, and, you know, seeing what the, seeing how the best settles for those numbers. But I think the numbers need to be driven in terms of the cost yet for the time period.
I just don't want to submit an opportunity to have more revenue sharing.
You know, I know about that, so...
You know, I mean, there's money, there's money on the table, we could, we don't want to miss that opportunity, that's all. Have you, have you experienced this before?
Actually, I haven't, but I see why you would, why, why you guys would go back for that mid-decade review. You've had so much growth, especially for a community that's not, you know, because what comes to mind is we're having very similar conversations with Holland Township right now. And, but they started out with 40,000 people and you guys started out with just under 8,000. So that extra 1,000 people is a significant difference to you guys, whereas for them it's not as big of a percentage change.
Oh, it's a big deal, though.
Yeah.
Anything else for Chris? Appreciate your time, Chris, thank you for presenting.
If I might, go ahead. I'd just like to thank Chris and McKenna and your whole group. I've been part of the process going through, and Sarah and Dan being involved and just the entire process, it was, I mean, I felt like I was just kind of high-level looking down on the people actually doing the work. But they did a fabulous job. The, the questions that were being asked and answered are absolutely critical for our future. You know, if we, if we don't plan, if we don't put this stuff in place, we're not going to go anywhere. And if we don't do it, we'll go backwards. So this is going to allow us to not only maintain what we have, but improve it in the future and control the growth because there's going to be opportunities for growth and we need to make sure that it's the growth that we want, that Hudsonville wants, that, that fits within our city and that plans for the future as we're between Grand Rapids and Holland and what that looks like being between Jamestown and Georgetown. So it was a great process and I appreciate all of your work on it with your team, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? There's a motion on the floor, last chance to discuss anything. I'll call for the rule.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullheiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Deverey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, before I go to the city managers' report, David?
Thank you.
Dave?
Thank you.
Jeremy? Larry?
I do like, I think, I've been involved in one early, early years ago, and I think it was...
Yeah, the last one was good, too.
It was good.
I think this was a step above. Dan?
Nothing.
Yeah?
All good.
That was Kentucky.
It's great.
Andrew?
Um, not too much. I just want to briefly mention, as you can see, hopefully nobody snuck a peek at the budget, you know, I gave it before the meeting, but there's going to be a little difference, a lot less footnotes and a lot more of projects, so that way then we can track what was in those footnotes easier. So it's just a little bit different formatting, same information's there, but a little different formatting. So like on the first page, you can see there's some letters next to the, the GL numbers, and so that just divides out what we used to have in a footnote. So you'll see that throughout the budget, but that's for tracking purposes for us, so that way then we know what we were actually spending our money on within those footnotes. So that just helps tracking a little bit. And then the other thing to note is we have a pretty good budget, I would say. I don't know. It took a lot of work, so I, I hope, I hope you guys review it and come with questions and we look forward to discussing that in two weeks from now, so, yeah.
Andrew, thanks for filling in tonight, and you're filling in for somebody that's in Sunny Greece, I believe, right?
And I hear she's having a good time.
I didn't hear, so apparently I didn't get her next time.
She was too busy Sunday.
Oh, yeah, okay. Anything to add, Andrew?
Yeah, I want to just make a note, we talked about the Buttermilk Creek Restrooms. We used that project as part of a career development plan for one of our employees over at DPW, and it was very successful and, you know, it's the happy to get, happy time to get to see that individual realize the fruits of their labor.
Well, make sure that person is involved in the ribbon cutting.
Absolutely.
In fact, they should be the one. Maybe even cut through.
Big scissors?
Yeah.
I'll leave that up to you guys to make the decision on who gets to use the big scissors.
I just have a couple of quick things. At the June City Commission meeting, I ask that we all wear a Hudsonville City T-shirt. They are available through Lindsay, and they're on display here. Make sure if you grab one, you let somebody know so we can make the appropriate posting out, the city managers volunteer to cover somehow. I think there might be a giveaway as well.
There are.
There are also, again, so you can go buy one either.
Let me connect with Lindsay tomorrow, I have a pretty creative idea, and then I'll see if I can get this done tomorrow. But, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
It'd be really cool if we all had a Hudsonville T-shirt of some sort, and then after the meeting, we all went outside and got a picture of all of us in these Hudsonville T-shirt for a form of marketing you could post someplace. But, and I know we all like to wear a T-shirt once in a while. So make sure you grab a T-shirt. Looks like we have a firm alternate on the ZBA. My neighbor who worked for the Holland Board of Public Works now works for Wyoming as an engineer. Mark Gibson's been involved in city projects for years and years. Hopefully we'll get his paperwork for the ZBA and we get that before the next city commission. Memorial Day, once again, I think all of you have been around for Memorial Day, is at 10 o'clock. Our guest speaker for the service is the Grand Rapids Battalion for the Fire Department, Mark Fankhauser, combat veteran from Iraq. He'll be speaking at the Memorial Day. And as, as always the case, there'll be open house by home with some catered food and lots of liars, I mean, lots of veterans that will be present. I want to thank everybody for the positive in the passing of the OAISD vote. I want to thank everybody here that were supportive. The vote was approved at, what, 60, 40?
Yes.
Yeah, right around there. And the clerk staff did a great job as always, you know. Jill always seems to hit a home run, and I'm really appreciative of that. A lot of people seem to also always think that there's some shenanigans and the voting has been manipulated. I see it on the, on the, in the internet, I see it on the Ottawa County GOB page, which is deeply concerning that there's that just national distrust of us as public servants that we, that they just immediately suspect that we're all lying and doing shenanigans, which is, would put us all in jail, but that is not the case. Finally, you're probably all aware, some of the controversy with the Jamestown Library padnose. Once again, I want to go on record, and I've spoken to the librarian, that as the mayor, we swear an oath to the Constitution, which includes the First Amendment, which is free speech. And that amendment exists for us not for speech we agree with, but for speech we disagree with. And as a public institution, sometimes we are obligated to present materials to the public that we may not agree with. But we are a public institution and we are paid for by the taxpayers. Having said that, I'm just deeply concerned that there's that kind of level of, I don't even know what the word is.
Division.
Division. That people have that kind of sense of what a library should be or can't be. Granted, there are community standards, we hire professional librarians to respect those and do their best to navigate that. But the First Amendment applies, it applies to all of us. And I think it's important that we always recognize that within our own community. I'm deeply concerned about that that has happened in Jamestown. That is not the America that I swore an oath to. Finally, and I hopefully, DDA is tomorrow, you know, that's open, anybody wants to attend there for the scorecarding. And finally, I don't know if it's in your notes, but I did notice that at the old Family Fair building, we now have a clothing resale and a dollar store. It was not ideal, but I think we have to accept it for what it is. I don't think that's the best use of that property, but it wasn't our ability to manage that. But nonetheless, we need to welcome them in the community. And with that, Mr. City Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty quick update this time around. We're in our finance committee. Thank you, gentlemen, for getting us back with some quick times. We'll meet the 20th at 7:30. We promise to get you in not an hour. Should be pretty simple, but want to give you an idea of more of the depth of the information going into the budget workshop. We have a planning commission meeting on May 21st at 7:00 p.m. And then since the date, budget workshop on May 27th at 6:00 p.m. The draft budget's been provided in front of you. There may be some very much nominal changes. Any substantial changes or any changes will be discussed and made note of either prior to the budget workshop. Basically, any cleaned-up numbers that we may have, Andrew and team have done a great job with that, but let me get the order open.
27th at 7:00 p.m.?
Yes, sir, yep.
6:00.
6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m.
And I know you guys know from our regular reports, but dozens of meetings have taken place between the finance department, department heads and myself since late February. Want to thank our department heads, and Andrew especially, Ashley as well, for your efforts. We look forward to a good workshop. Yesterday at our final, final, not using the final, final, final budget meeting Andrew and I had, he said, "I think this is a good budget." And hearing that from the finance director is always something I like to hear. But a lot of time and effort went into it. With that being said, we look forward to the discussion and any potential changes. While you're reviewing the draft budget, any questions you have about existing items in there, I ask that you direct to Andrew. Prior to the workshop helps, that way we can collect any necessary information, but by all means, at the workshop works as well. Anything not included or questions unrelated to the draft budget in terms of considerations, capital improvements, I ask that you direct those towards me, although I think Andrew and I are pretty hook, line and sinker in the logic with here. It was, it was a lot of work, but pretty seamless, all things considered, but...
Tyler, can I ask a quick question on that, just to help me? So the CIP is a separate budget from this, or are the CIP items included in this spreadsheet?
Yeah, so when you were comparing and contrasting the CIP, not all items from the CMP, from the CIP would be included in the budget. So there were some staffing decisions that were made, and they were all because of fiscal restraints. So use that as a guidance of, hey, this is what we want to do, funds permitting. And, you know, again, the budget's just a reflection of priorities, the priorities that this board set. So if there's something that you want to talk about beforehand that you plan on bringing up, any information I can get you behind the scenes and talk about it. Because at the end of the day, we want this body to be comfortable with the budget. After all, the budget is just a reflection of the goals and visions established by the city commission. So, yeah, by all means, compare and contrast it, if you find any errors in there, I'll blame Andrew because it's convenient, but, no, but we were very, we were very intentional. That doesn't mean that there might be some questions in there or certain things have been omitted. Keep in mind, we're buying a fire truck this year, we have the third and final payment of Jibby Plaza, and while we told City Commission that we were going to pull this from the fund balance, that wasn't good enough for Andrew and I, and we did our best to work some of those costs in our normal operating costs, thus protecting fund balance, which is why, when I say dozens of meetings, I'm being accurate in that we looked through numbers and trimmed down numbers where we could while making sure that we're being practical in our approach. But we were able to, we'll talk about this, but we did dive into the fund balance. I think we were able to find cost savings within the budget to the 2% to 40%. So kudos to Andrew and our departments there. But again, any questions prior, it just allows us to get more information, we can share all answers with the city commission, but don't hesitate to ask questions, it'll make the budget workshop smoother and more timely. I think Mayor said it great, but congratulations and thank you to Jill and Andrea for administering a well, well-run, safe and efficient election last Tuesday. Awesome, thank you to all our election workers and Mike Klosterhaus and our facilities team for setting up and tearing down. It definitely takes an army, and I kind of say we have one of the best, if not the best staff in the state administering our elections. Top-notch, organized, consistent, fair, efficient. So thank you, everybody. Oh, and additionally, thank you to all those who came out to vote and participate in democracy, much appreciated. We mentioned the Buttermilk Creek ribbon cutting, June 10th at 12:00 p.m. There'll still be some landscaping under care, but save the date. Jacob mentioned the two recent grant submissions with regards to M.TEDF and CATF and the Safe Street Grant. Thank you, Bob, Don and Dan Strahura for your efforts there. You've had a lot of success and I know you miss the shots you don't take, so we look forward to hearing that. I've been working with staff on a citywide project update to be placed on the city's new website with a link provided on the city's official Facebook page. This will be an update of what we know and have, is existing, until the new budget is approved. We're not going to mention those projects, so we'll do another update, but working on being more communicative on the good things that we're doing, because I do believe that we're doing a lot of good things. With that being said, and finally, I'm going to go through some, some of these updates that will be included. I alluded to this in my weekly managers' report, but we've been in collaboration with Joe Smith, or Joe Bush, excuse me, the Ottawa County Water Resources Commissioner, our city engineer, a third-party engineer with regards to some erosion on Berry Street in the proximity of 32nd and Berry. Oh, we are working on that. We're getting some numbers, some updates, some ideas of what we can do. That'll be brought to you guys at a later date, but city staff as well, our engineers are working in haste.
My concern there is that it's, it's urgent.
Yep.
If we have another good downpour, just, do we need to have all the special authorized funding?
That, that may be appropriate, that's everything on the table we request.
So don't hesitate, because if we have a good downpour, we, we're going to, we're going to make the problem much worse really quick.
Yeah, and I can appreciate saying that, Mr. Mayor. I echo the same thing to our engineers, to Drake Commissioner, as well as Bob Miller. We've had two onsite meetings and a Zoom meeting going back about a week ago. So we are working in haste, but I won't hesitate to request that you call us, especially needed. The MBR Buttermilk Creek closeout, we received 114,000, we have 20% left to receive, as I discussed. 32nd Avenue resurfaced from Berry Street to New Holland. Good news, as of May 1st, both NEPA and SHIBO have approved that. The unfortunate thing with the delay in their improvement, again, we need to go through these two endings because of the federal, federal funds that are utilized, and this is in regards to the roughly 240,000 in local agency project funding that we received, we notified that we received in January. So all this is moving very quick. Unfortunately, the approval from these two entities has slowed down our timeline. Right now, because we have to follow the state letting schedule, we're looking at a July letting. The earliest that we'll be able to start will be the middle of August. We are well aware that school starts on August 18th. On our initial timeline, had things gone to the timeline that we believed was fair, we will be breaking ground on the project right now. With a limited construction season in Michigan, you know, it's challenging, especially with certain approvals on the two other agencies. We'll communicate with the schools, I'll communicate with the mayor and the commission as a whole about some ideas about adjusting the potential timeline, and we'll get in detail to that now. But the project will be moving forward. And, and just to let the folks at home know... And, and just to let the folks at home know, um, road funding is scarce. There's a lot more road work in every city in the state right now that funding is available for. So when we realize, uh, two hundred and forty thousand of additional funding for roadworks, uh, that must be obligated by October one, it puts a lot of pressure on timelines and staff, but we can get more road by stretching out our funding. So while this may be inconvenient for roughly a two to three week project, um, we know Thirty-second needs it and, uh, city staff's working hard to make that happen. So, um, did get approved from NEPA and SHIPPO. There'll be more information, um, coming soon. Um, with regards to Highland, uh, lift station replacement, solar abordings are completed and the design is roughly seventy-five percent done. Um, the engineer and Bob Miller will look to go over the initial, uh, design and get some new budget estimates from the estimates that we've been, uh, working off of, uh, that are roughly two to three years old. There's a lot more information coming on that. Um, good news, the Corporate Grove and Corporate Grove Drive and Corporate Exchange. Uh, this is a, uh, a matching grant, uh, utilizing the M dot TedF CATB grant program. Um, we came in under, uh, under budget, so you'll save thirty thousand dollars. Uh, but the project will be starting tomorrow and ending by the twenty-eighth. Um, concrete work will look to be started on May twenty-third. Um, asphalt removal will start early next week. Roughly a week and a half project. It's a fifty-fifty matching grant with a total construction cost of a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Can we go ahead? Is World Technologies there today, where?
Bob and Jacob have been in contact with, as well as Lindsay, with the impacted businesses. They had an onsite meeting, um, with, uh, the businesses out there. They were inviting me to a meeting to discuss some of the logistics there. Um, so it's happening quickly. Um, we built our best to communicate going back to last week. Um, Highland Drive reconstruction, this is a GVMC funding eighty-twenty match. Um, again, stretching, uh, our road dollars. Uh, we're sixty percent done. We're currently waiting on NEPA and SHIPPO for approval to move forward with the project. Uh, school app parking lot started last week. Substantial completion is targeted by June sixth. Uh, they're pouring curbs this week and we'll look to pave the base course next week.
Cause they're still in school.
School app parking lot across from Terror.
Oh, oh, right, that Terror's workout.
Yep, but, uh, school traffic does impact that area and so we are, um, making sure that, uh, we don't have, you know, full closures along with that with the Terror Station project as well and working with the bus garage at the schools. So, um, and then, uh, finally, I'm hoping on June tenth, I'll be bringing some estimates to, or some, excuse me, um, a recommendation to prove a bid with regards to the Hughes Park connecting path. It's, uh, it's been on the city CIP. Um, Bob's going to be looking to prep that next week. We had been waiting a little bit to see where, uh, the current fiscal year's budget ended. We believe, uh, we're, we're in a good space to be able to recommend moving forward. But, um, Bob will be securing the, uh, the seal builds, um, with regards to our purchasing policy. We'll meet with Andrew to make sure that, uh, the numbers match as we look to close out the fiscal year. Um, but just another item, impactful item for our park system, we're looking to cross off the list.
How much?
Four?
For the?
The pathway?
Yeah.
How much money? Well, we don't have, uh, we're estimating, we're estimating that, yeah, we're doing the prep work by ourselves. We're going to rent equipment to decrease the labor cost, but asphalt costs alone, alone, we're looking at roughly forty to fifty thousand.
Yes, as we were discussing, I think last month, uh, we were going to take the seventy-five thousand from, uh, the sheriff contract that we haven't spent and transfer that to the park department.
And we need to go the pathway, uh, because of this. So, um, but we, we want to confirm the numbers, um, as we look to close out the fiscal year, um, doing energy doses there. But we're looking to sneak that in with this fiscal year, um, as much as possible. So with that being said, unless there's any questions or comments, uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes on the floor.
I think Larry's got one other one to bring up something.
Well, just to remind, I think, I don't know if all of you have seen the Fleecing Vandenberg invite to Whitecaps game. Just to remind you.
Tenth of June, but you got to reply back so they hold it together. I think we're allowed to bring one or two, yes. You want to bring your grand son or something?
No, I'm not bringing my wife.
And if I need to call down and raise a stick or an extra, I think, uh, our engineering firms are very busy. Um, I've seen the invoices, uh, to the engineering firm. I think we can slip one or two more people.
If you want to bring your grandson, we can bring him. Or your, uh, your grandson.
I don't know if he's at the age.
He's not that age yet. Dave, you going to bring your kids?
Uh, looking it up right now. Looking it up right now, sir.
Uh, and was there something else? Uh, any other discussion? Harry Dodd, Marjorie?